We bring the meeting order. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the joint workshop between the Swanee County Commissioners, Live Oak City Council, Swanee County, at the Swanee County Judicial Annex. At this time, I'd like to do the invocation by Commissioner Perkins, pledge by Commissioner Mollie, if you'll all stand, please.
Let us pray. God our Father, Creator of heaven and earth, we come now, God, humble at your presence. Lord, we thank you for how you have blessed and kept us, oh God. Lord, we just give you the praise and glory. We thank you, God, for looking over us, dear God, as we went through this storm, dear God, you kept us safe. God, many things have happened, God, but nothing was detrimental to our lives or to our homes, to our families, and God, we just say you thank you, Father. And we thank you, dear God, for all those, dear God, that took time out of their busy schedule, dear God, that come and help us, dear God, during this, during this time, dear God, this disaster. We thank you, God, for everyone, God. We thank you for our department, God, how they came together, each department working together, dear God, unified, and to get these things under control, dear God. And we thank you for our community, God, that was patiently, dear God, and worked with us, dear God, as we worked through this situation. And, God, we thank you, dear God, for being God above all and looking upon us, oh God. And, oh, continuing to look upon us, God, we continue, dear God, to rebuild, I mean, rebuild Live Oak better than what it is. And we thank you now in Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the people of God, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I didn't mean to leave Brantford out, I'm sorry. But welcome. Thank you for coming. At this time, it's an informational update from FEMA, Mr. John Shaw. If you... Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I really appreciate you guys for giving me this time to provide you and your citizens some information. I won't be long before you, but my name is John Shaw. My role in the disaster is Intergovernmental Affairs Specialist. And what do we do? As an Intergovernmental Affairs Specialist, I'm the liaison between elected officials in the impacted areas in FEMA. And the grease that really lubricates the skids for recovery is information. And so, my job is to provide elected officials in the municipalities and local governments information. And I think some of you might have received some information from me last night. I sent out a daily blast of news releases and fact sheets. So, check your emails. You might have gotten some from me last night. So, with that being said, one of the main things about FEMA and the response as we come into your communities is registration. And I'm here to really encourage you and your constituents to register. Matter of fact, Franklin and I had a discussion earlier about the categories of what's allowable. Everything is a case-by-case basis. So, we encourage every citizen to apply. And there's numerous ways to apply. You can either go to the website, which is disasterassistance.gov. That's one word. You can register online. Or you can call the 1-800 number, which is 800-621-3362. And someone's on that line from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And additionally, we have the DRC located here in your town. And they're open there from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And there's FEMA personnel there to do a number of things. Number one, to help you with your registration. Secondly, to give you status on your registration if you've applied already. And they're there to assist you with that. There's assistance for anyone who might be challenged with any impairment. It's accessible, very accessible for everyone.
Where's your letter?
I believe down, just down the road.
Coliseum?
Yeah, Coliseum, yes. Okay. Now, for some of you who have applied already in the last couple of days, you should be receiving what we call is a determination letter. That's our response to your registration. And hopefully, you got a positive response and you were approved that initial round. But if you, if some of your citizens did not get a favorable, favorable response in that determination letter, that is not the end. They might not have got a favorable response because they lack information. The application lacks information. So, there might be some requests for identification, resident, proof of residence, any of those, number of those things. So, if determination has come back unfavorable, that's not, that's not the end of the line. Continue to respond to whatever request for information. You might find that, that document so that you can come to a final conclusion. SBA, Small Business Association, is part of that application process. So, in addition to registering, you also have to apply. That doesn't mean you have to take a loan, but the whole package of assistance includes SBA, Small Business Loan. So, all your situations are considered. And if you're not eligible for over here, they try to group you over here. But they look at the entire package for you, to assist you as best possible. So, remember, when you fill out the SBA loan, that doesn't mean you're filling out a loan application. That means you're filling out all the possible assistances so that when they, when they, when they have you there at one time, they can consider you for the whole gambit of assistance. Okay? Additionally, SBA also provides loans for businessmen. So, if you have any business people, entrepreneurs in the city or the county that need assistance in recovery, SBA is there for them at small loan rates as well. Registration. We currently, when I looked this morning, over 4,000 people in your county have registered with FEMA. Actually, 750 yesterday, and cumulatively, it's over 4,000. So, we encourage, I know there's more than 4,000 people in your county. So, we encourage you to get the word out. Use every medium that you have at your disposal to let people know, please register. Please register. I talked about SBA. We've, we've received 25 SBA applications in the county and nine business applications thus far. No determination has been made on those loan applications yet, but they're forthcoming. All right. I spoke about the fact sheets and the news releases that I send out to you guys daily. I'm gonna, I got the, when we come into the area, we rely a lot on Google. So, if any of you guys are new to the council, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you an email. And you have any new representatives on your, on your board here, I appreciate if you inform me of who they are so I can add them to my distribution list. Now, in conclusion, my, I feel my greatest responsibility is to assist your shepherds. I know their main concern are you. And their best way to help you is with information. So, if you have any questions about the recovery process, any, if any of you or your friends or your neighbors have any FEMA questions, funnel them to them, your representatives, and they will funnel it to me and I'll get a response back to you. Okay? Any questions that I can build at this time?
Whoever, whoever wants to speak, if you have any questions.
I just want to put on your radar for our end account. I know that they have a disaster recovery center here. I have checked our library that has internet access, so if they want to send FEMA reps down there, we can, I remember last year, eight years ago, this happened, waiting two and a half hours to get through that line of people. We can take some pressure off that, possibly, by sending people to help in that way to a closer location, and that's your, your area, so if you want to put that in. You know, and I've already, I've already spoken to them, but I'm just letting you know.
And that's a good ask. And you take that directly to your EM Director for your county. And he is the one, in conjunction with the state, that makes that request and actually inserts that into your communities. Okay?
Any questions on the board?
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
So, a lot of my constituents and just people that...
Where, where are you representing?
Ah, the city council, District 4.
What city, please, sir? Okay, go ahead.
I was gonna say, there's three different boards you're representing. You got the county commission.
Oh, that's fine, that's why, that's why I asked.
You got the Live Oak City Council, and you got the town of Brantford.
Town of Brantford, yes, sir. I think I've sent you something, something to you this morning, but, but go ahead, answer your question.
So, a lot of them have put in the applications for assistance for FEMA, and they've been, and I do the same, they have adequate, adequate insurance coverage, but they're still facing this huge, I guess you would call it the disaster deductible, the percentage that comes into play. So, some of them are still facing a huge deductible that's gonna be in the way of that. Is there any assistance to, like, bridge that gap if we're getting turned down from FEMA, so to speak, because of adequate insurance?
Understood. Well, all of that, that personal insurance is the first line of defense, of course. And then FEMA, if FEMA can assist, then FEMA, there's also voluntary agencies and the like that come into the total package. So, actually, as far as that individual situation is concerned, I would continue to follow after FEMA because there's, well, once you fall out of the eligibility for the first bucket, they look at you again for the second bucket. And so, tell them to take another look at FEMA to see if FEMA has exhausted all opportunities for them before they say they haven't, they haven't been served.
So, they've been denied initially, they can reapply, is that what you're saying?
I wouldn't, not reapply, but I would ask them to go down to the DRC and talk with one of our representatives and ask them, is that the final solution? I'm not a subject matter expert on IA, so I don't, I couldn't, couldn't fully answer your question. But they are subject matter experts, and so they would be the ones who would drill down on the application to see if there's anything else that can be done.
Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Pat Crawford. I'm a division supervisor. I'm following your folks. If you turn around, I'll be up here. Up here. The EOC, and second, as man, and you can help us out.
Thank you.
And how I'm up, that division supervisor, my job is to, it's like a liaison, liaison, the resource, the resource that FEMA offers, the DSA, the Meligation, the IA, the PA, my job is to get, you know, connected with the emergency manager.
What was your name, ma'am?
Pat Crawford.
Pat Crawford?
Yes, sir.
And you're with FEMA?
Yeah, division supervisor.
Division Supervisor. Thank you.
I've heard EOC the other night. I think you were at the EOC the other night, out there. Yes, ma'am.
Right. The division supervisors insert themselves in your EOC, and they are the direct pipeline to your county emergency manager.
Mr. Chairman, you're on mine. Mr. Shaw, or to the young lady in the back, I've heard some of the same concerns from our citizens that they call and they get denied. But I think, I'm not sure that everything was in place yet with you guys for our community, so I don't know if they jumped the gun on some of that stuff. I agree with what you're saying. Some, some of the folks that have contacted me said that they called and got denied because there wasn't, they didn't have enough information, is the way I understood it, so...
Right. And so, if they, if they, if there's a request for information, if that's the concern in the denial, then the denial letter also has a list of what information that needs to be supplied to finish off the application.
Is there a perimeter there? Is there any request too big or too small? I mean, typically, these are just small families asking.
No. Once again, FEMA doesn't make people home. That is, unfortunately, that's because of regulations and, and the law, FEMA cannot make someone home. We wish that we could.
Sure.
But under the statutes and the laws, FEMA will assist the citizenry of our, of our nation as best we can. So, the best thing to do is appeal, if, if you get a determin, determination letter, appeal. You might have justification that might be allowable. So, and everything's a case-by-case basis. No one, it's not one size to fit all. So, each one has to be their own advocate and take their case to FEMA and see what happens.
Mr. Chairman.
Larry, I'm sorry.
Councilman Campbell, I spoke to a FEMA rep today, earlier in Allen Park, and the way he explained it to me was, is the online process, the application process, if they get denied on that, at the, what he's calling DRC is at the Coliseum in Exhibition 2. That's kind of like the second layer. So, you can go there and sit down with a, with a supervisor, if you will. That's kind of like their second line of defense. And sometimes, those initial denials that are made online could be overridden by the folks out at the Coliseum in Exhibition 2 with FEMA. If you, I mean, they're gonna ask, you're gonna have a one-on-one interview with them, and they, you know, they're gonna ask for documentation and whatnot. But that initial online denial could be overridden out there.
Is there hours of operation of that?
7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Seven, seven, I think.
But, and then on the heels of Commissioner Landier, that's kind of what I found out, was the folks that were calling, I don't think were prepared and didn't have all the information they needed. So, as we're talking and the public's watching this, I think that's the most encouraging thing, is just have all the documentation, like you said, that you need.
Of course. People had the worst day of their life a week ago.
So, on FEMA, for signing up for the FEMA help, is that per family? Is it per person?
It's per...
Per household?
Yes, sir.
Per household? Mr. Larry, I think...
Legal residents of that household.
That household.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Larry?
Yes, sir. Early on, I'm there with the city.
Yes, sir.
Different relation, what are we talking about? You mentioned news releases coming to everybody. Has, has anything been released about the impact on ag in this region? Do you know USDA is coming, if they can help, or NRCS? Have y'all talked to them to help the ag?
I'll submit, I'm not public relations, so I don't do news release.
You said news release.
Well, well, let me, let me, I feel, I give you news releases that are given to me. But I don't manufacture them. We have a separate group that does. But I can submit, I do have the, as a matter of fact, that's one of my functions. If I come out here and questions asked to me, just as you asked, is there any ag considerations? What about the farmers? What's gonna happen to them? Are they gonna be subsidized or anything? I can submit that back, and I can get a answer back.
I talk to people out of our community around the state, and everybody believes that there was a tree on a house in Live Oak. No one has heard anything about the ag problem, which is the economic driver of this community, is agriculture. And so, the media really needs to understand that the economic driver, like I said, is ag. No one's talking about it at all. And so, we really need to bring that to the forefront.
Well, and as, as a partner that's invited in to assist, some of those questions are more readily supplied by your local government and also your Department of Agriculture here in Florida, so they...
We already contacted Department of Ag. The commissioner was here in this room Sunday.
Okay.
But we've not seen anything on the media.
Well, we, FEMA doesn't want to get in front of any of your locals, so that would be a question. If they want, if, if that Department of Agriculture wants FEMA to align themselves with their response, then we'll do so. Yes, sir.
And who did you say I needed to contact to get a location in Brantford?
Your EOC, your director, EM Director.
A. Phillips. A. Phillips is in charge right now.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Perkins.
You spoke about some that were turned away that didn't have the proper information, and I heard some that have come and said they didn't have the information, they were turned down at the, at the Douglas Center, when you had just, opportunity set up there. What are, what are some of the things that they would need to bring with them so when they come in to meet with your FEMA agents, that they have, already have that in hand so they can present anything, hopefully to complete their case there?
Okay. Identification, number one. Personal identification, driver's license, social security card, any, any current and valid ID. Proof of residence, which will be a utility bill, something like that with their name on it and the address. Those are the preliminary essential pieces of information. And then, they can talk about the damage that they incurred. And there, there's no need to have pictures or anything like that, but the, the first wave of information we need is identification.
So, you're saying that you encourage everyone to apply? I know some agents came by, three of them came by, and I didn't apply. I did have some amount of damage to my shop, there was a tree fell on it, but I told them I wasn't gonna apply for it. But there's others that also did not apply that might have some amount of damage, but you're encouraging everyone to apply.
I'm encouraging everyone that might have been negatively impacted by the storm to apply. Plus, that, another thing about applying is not only to assist you to recover, but it also is good information for your county and your state to, to know how many people were, were impacted. Because after this, there's gonna be some after-action discussion. Y'all haven't had a storm like this in a while in this region, right? So, now, now you're gonna have, some best practices have come up. Did we do a good job of responding? How can we do a better job of responding? So, that registration is key. They can identify which areas were impacted. What, what are the, what is the drainage systems out in that area? There was 500 people that were impacted in the southeast region of the county. Is our drainage up to snuff? You know, all, all of those considerations are opened up with information. So, help your, your officials here by giving them your information so they can help you.
Think it's good to know.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
What is the deadline?
The deadline is gonna be far off. I think it's normally three, three months past the incident date, but I'm not certain of that. Am I correct on that?
Well, you're basically right, but they have not given, they, well, the deadline, I don't know yet.
Yeah, we, we haven't even closed the incident period yet. It's still open. Yes, sir.
Councilor Tony, question for the impact of loss of power and/or as food and refrigeration being lost, is that part of the FEMA package?
Yes. Yes. Yes, that is, that's an immediate trigger for assistance, yes.
Ms. Crawford?
Yes. You might want to contact Red Cross, unless they have a label, you can take the food. You also check on Red Cross.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so I know it used to be where the power companies, if power was off for a certain number of days, and whatever you had, you took pictures of it, and then managed to make a claim to that, how that's still going on or not, but you said it's a part of FEMA, so...
I think...
How does it let my constituents know?
And Red Cross will be here at our regular board meeting this afternoon to give an update as well.
Right.
And for those who have insurance on your homeowners' policy, your insurance will cover your loss of, loss of food.
Seven chairs boxes.
Sure.
Any other questions, Mr. Shaw?
Thank y'all for, oh, yes.
I think it was again, we had one.
I keep hearing people ask, is FEMA gonna pick up all the trash and the rotters that are piled on the...
FEMA does not, we, FEMA does not do it directly. Huh? Go ahead.
The state is in charge of picking up all the tree limbs and debris that piled out to the roadway. The trash is in town, it's just a panel. It's just a given, it's to pick it up. The EOC, the state's taking care of all of the, they're removing, disappointing for high contractors to do that. So, everybody's encouraged to get there, to the roadway, so that they can pick it up.
I get a lot, I get that same question a lot. Or is the, the, what town is it? County, the state, the state?
The state's doing everything. Both the city of Live Oak and Brantford and county, as far as I understand.
One more question, Mr. Shaw. There's a guy called, he lives, he's a place, he lives on a place which the county maintains. If he puts the, the debris along, he's, he's been held in place without being picked up by the state?
That's, that's a good question. Probably not, because it's a private, private road, but we can, I'll check that out.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, sir.
Ricky?
Ricky.
I'm old, I, you know, what he's asking, I know one before where we had declared emergencies, that the public safety or the public cleanup, that allowed to go on private property. If they don't, or maybe it has to be...
Yeah. Currently, the, the way the declaration is done, we, we have the capacity to do that. Whether we exercise that capacity or not is another question.
Well, and I would agree with that because we're not in the cleanup process. That's the state, necessarily, that's, is where it becomes a question.
This would be a stair-step approach on, on the cleanup, I'm sure.
Bailey?
State will not go on private property.
But as, if, if we're under this declaration, could the county then possibly do those places?
We could, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Ma'am.
Ms. Crawford.
Too loud, too fast. When they call, now, you have a lot, a lot of volunteers, agents that is, is coming this way. One, one is, hey, look at them. They are retired VA, and they volunteer their service. Also, they help, help your home, you know, repair your home.
Well, they're here already, aren't they? I've seen them at the EOC.
They're here.
Yes, ma'am.
I love the idea of FEMA coming in and you helping them, so that is wonderful. But just like you said, if those persons who have no home anymore, what is FEMA, what are your plans, or what do you, are you gonna bring in places for them to live? Exactly how are you gonna help these people who are homeless right now?
That's a phased response. Initially, there's TSA available to house people temporarily. That's the first way to, to... That's the first way to get people housed somewhere. And then as we move forward in responding to the disaster, then all those other housing considerations will be decided on after, down the road.
Sure.
Answer your question then is that, I understand that FEMA's got some trailers or how do they work temporary houses? But they're going out to the Spirit of Swanee. And actually they're, they got contracts to put out, you know, all the conduit and electric hose and sewer out there. So that's, so they'll be temporarily housing out of Spirit of Swanee. When, I'm not sure, but they're in the process of getting it all together. But that's where that's all the temporary housing gonna be at.
Mr. Chairman, basically what has happened, we've got people in the shelters that were displaced. We made arrangements to take the displaced people that we're aware of. We've got hotel rooms for them now. Once the temporary housing from the state of Florida arrives, we partnered with the Spirit of Swanee to use that location to do that temporarily. Once, once we get that up and running, the transition would happen there. We'll set a timeframe in which they will need to find other accommodations. It's not a long-term fix, so there'd be a transitional process. But if we, if you know of somebody that is displaced, let us know so we can make arrangements for them.
And that's exactly right, Mr. Scott, I was gonna say, because they're actively, right now, putting those trailers in place. I was out there before we came up to this meeting. And that is something they ask, if you know of anyone that maybe has not been, that they're not aware of, they need to know sooner than later. Because like you said, they're adding that conduit, they're adding that stuff. They're, they're creating those places right now.
Informational point two, those are, again, from the state of Florida. And they'll be our assets when we get done.
And I just, I'll add to that, anyone that is having to house there because they've lost a house or not livable conditions, Mr. Gregg and I was just talking about this and I made the phone call, those children that are placed there will also have the opportunity for a school bus to pick them up and get them to and from school from that location as well. I know the school board's working on that too.
Mr. Shaw's got another engagement, I guess, in Hamilton County, you said?
Yes, sir.
So he's gotta get out of here. Is there anything else?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Shaw, we appreciate you coming.
Mr. Shaw, appreciate you.
And if any other questions come up, please pipe them to me. And if you want us to come back in another forum with more subject matter experts, we can make that happen.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Crawford may want to come up and answering questions. She's wealthy knowledge also.
My job is to connect the resources. And I work closely with the ERS event and keeping them happening.
Come to the mic, please.
Oh, sorry.
You're fine. Didn't mean to catch you off guard.
Like I said, the resources, well, if, like, if you want a DRC, a disaster recovery center, thank you. And you wanted, your state, your emergency manager have to request those things. And when he does, as a division supervisor, I go and up to the branch and talk to the branch by giving, bringing a disaster recovery center wherever he might need. But it's like a change of command. Everything got to go up, it might not come down, but yeah. But yeah, but that's, no, that's just my, my job. But mostly with me, if the state does something, I do my best to try to get it. And I know I'm gonna get it about 95% of the time. I'm not saying I get it all the time, but. So if y'all ever, you know, you need me, I'm gonna get you, well, I don't have no cars. I'm gonna run out of cars.
Give a phone number? Give a phone number?
Yes, yes. Pat Crawford, telephone number, 601-202-7164961.
Repeat that? Yes, ma'am, please. Got you now.
But let me, let me advise, this right here is just off the rubber. But anybody that has, who got damage to their home, you know, okay, first, go through your insurance company. Just cause you got insurance does not mean FEMA is not going to help you. It don't, it does not mean that. Also, they are, for those who qualify to go to SBA, fill out, fill out the paperwork. Do the paperwork. Cause that right there, you have to fill it out because you don't, you know, if you're gonna get help, it might stop. So it's all, everything's a process. So maybe, you know, you start talking about loans, nobody wanna take out a loan. They give a word loan, they stop, you know, with the paper, doing the paperwork. But like I said, it's a process. But you continue to get the help. And then down the line, there are going to be different, FEMA might offer different grants. But as you know, FEMA give more people, if you got them, encourage your people to rent. More people rent more money than FEMA might offer. So do just basic, you know, I'm just, make sure you do it, but you get the help. People need help, okay?
Thank you, appreciate that.
Appreciate that.
Okay, but you need me?
We gonna call you.
Mr. Chairman, I like to just think about too, the Small Business Administration during tropical, tropical storm Debbie, I had two kids flooded out, one with three foot of water, one with five foot of water in their, in their dwellings. We went and got a loan, it's a low interest loan, helped us get the resources we need to fix those back up. You know, we pay that back obviously, but it's low interest and it kind of helps you get through the, the short term. So, you know, use it as a resource. It's really helpful. But anyway, that's a good avenue also.
Is there any questions on the board? None?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just say, what Mr. Shaw said and Ms. Crawford there is, I think everyone's done outstanding job, considering we've never been through this before. Everyone is represented here and some that are not. But again, I think we said at one of our meetings, we don't want to be greedy, but if there's anything, like they said, that we see that could be done better and we need those tools now, I think now's the time, is what I'm hearing for, for us to ask for. So everyone needs to look at their own departments and let's figure that out and make sure we can take care of this, this community even better than we have this time. I'm proud of what's going on, but maybe we can do better. Y'all always can do better.
Absolutely. Commissioner Land, anything? Commissioner Mobley, anything? Mr. Burgess?
Yes, sir.
Adam, anything?
No, I do want to point out, and maybe this is a little brown nosy, but I just want to commend everybody on the board because as someone who's a resident here, y'all have no idea how hard everybody up here has worked over the last week. And I know everybody over there is an elected official too. But from my end of it, just being on the receiving end of the occasional end of the email string as the attorney, just my commendations to everybody here on how hard every single one of y'all have worked. And especially to Mr. Scott, who's had to take points on all this. And it's an overwhelming job, so I just point that out.
Well, in closing, I just want to say how proud I am of the residents of this county. Helping one another, helping neighbor, helping clean out their driveway, get a tree off their house. Whatever the case was, I've seen a lot of it and makes me real proud. So well, seeing nothing else, I just need a motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry.
If y'all go to swanepa.com, type in your parcel number. And when you look under parcel info, there's a new button there that allows you to report, report hurricane damage. Hopefully sometime today, you'll be able to also take pictures and upload pictures to it. We're trying to get around the county to do damage assessment, but with only three field guys, typically takes us five years. There's no way we possibly can get through the whole county. So this is one of the ways that we're gonna keep track with it. FEMA's gonna help and the sheriff's office, other places are gonna start helping when this, when the picture part of it goes live this afternoon to start pushing it out to the public. So you got some people that don't have damage, but if you do have damage, there's a way to report it to our office through this. So then it will trigger us to come out and do a field inspection unless you take good enough pictures where we can do an in-house appraisal on it through the pictures. There's also on the front page of the website, the statute for the catastrophic damage, which the legislature put that into place this year. If y'all remember in the past, they've been doing it for individual storms as they hit. They've now made it permanent. It does offer a refund for people on the property taxes, but we have to go by that statute. So we put it on there so people could understand the process. Gotta be out of your home for 30 days at minimum. And then it's gonna be a prorated refund based on the number of days you were out, only for the tax portion that goes to the dwelling. Any outbuildings or extra features that were demolished, they will come off of the tax roll for 2024. Only thing that the state gave us permission to take off for the current year would be houses that are demolished or you're out of it for a minimum of at least 30 days. But if y'all got any other questions about it, you can call me or call the office. My cell phone number's 386-590-2413. If you know people that have severe damage to their house, have them to use this, this new tool that we have to report the damage. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I would turn on social media and they've taken over our social media. They have like a central server social media. It'd be great to have that permission pushed out, kind of Facebook pages or whatever.
Okay, they're gonna do a QR code and they're gonna, we're gonna start pumping it through my social media. Basically all I'm gonna do through our, my Facebook page is to do a link to the website and just give little step-by-step instructions. Look up your property. Once you look up your property and you get to the parcel detail page, just the first button up there. And then it's, when you click on it, it auto fills the top part with your parcel number, your name and your address. And then you need your phone number, your email address, and then you start going through your damage. The first three questions have to do with total loss for being displaced for more than 30 days. And then after that, it jumps into like tier two, which is just damage, but it's damage that we need to come out and look at that may affect next year's tax roll. That's not necessarily gonna be eligible for a refund. Thank y'all.
Ricky, what is your cell phone number one more time?
Oh, you can't have it. 386, it's 590-2413.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to add, you're currently SBA representative, set up at the Chamber of Commerce. And you're being at seven AM, seven PM.
What's that for, ma'am? What'd you say that was?
SBA.
Oh, okay. At the Chamber of Commerce on the second floor.
Yeah, you're just seeing residents as to.
Okay, thank you.
And also just keep in mind, we threw this together in the last 24 hours on this way to alert us. So far, I haven't run across any bugs with it, but like anything else, I'm sure there will be. If you happen to notice something, please call me and let me know about it personally so I can get in touch with my IT person to get it straightened out as fast as we can. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ricky. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, Danielle brought up, brought up the chamber. And while you're there at seeing SBA, you could walk next door to the fire department and Oregon Company is there sharpening chainsaws for free.
Sure, that's well needed.
I don't know their hours, but I see them there at eight, eight-thirtieth, and they're there till I know five-thirtieth. They'll sharpen your chainsaw for free. They're not doing any businesses. It's only for citizens. No, if you're a for-profit company, they are not doing that. And purchase.
Is there anything else? Saying none, I just need a motion to adjourn the workshop.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mobley, second by Commissioner Land, all in favor of I?
Aye.
All totally same sign for adjourned.